Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Nine o'clock and today's the 28th day of August 2017, 9:00 a.m. We'll begin with prayer and a pledge of allegiance if you'll stand and join me.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day and for a chance to gather together, to transact and discuss and make decisions on county business. Father, we pause for a moment to pray for our state, our neighbors, even outside of our state that are dealing with tragic consequences from flooding. We pray, Lord, for no further destruction, for no loss of life. We pray for the safety, well-being, protection of first responders that not only live in the area but have taken time out of their work schedules to come to the area to help. We pray for our chief and his men who have deployed down there. Father, we just ask that you would slow these roads and divert this water and just allow these communities to begin to heal. Father, there's many months, if not years, ahead of rebuilding and we know that this state is strong, but we call upon the power of your name, Father, to accomplish this. We put our trust in you and just ask, Lord, that you would help us comfort those who are now homeless, without businesses, without cars, without any personal belongings, and who are at the mercy of those who are caring for them and those who have rescued them. We just pray for continued rescue efforts there, Father. We thank you, Lord, that we know that you are in control and we trust you, Lord, to get us through this. We turn this agenda now over to you and ask for your guidance, blessing, direction, and wisdom in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a country which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin today with item one, as we always do, public comment time. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, I don't have anyone that has requested time to speak, but if there's anyone that would like to address the court at this time, this is your opportunity. Not seeing any hands, I'll move to number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our last meeting two weeks ago on August 14th of 2017. Make motion. We approve minutes. Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second is made by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed. Item number three, report from our road engineer, Mr. Ledbetter. Welcome today, Roger and Phillip. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, we completed our second mow and cycle with basically just a 15-foot strip mowing. And we completed side cutting every county road intersection in the county, and that should improve the safety around all intersections. We tried to get all that done before school started. We've placed coal mix on base failure locations that will be worked on County Road 3375, County Road 3340, and County Road 3337. We still need to place coal mix on one spot on County Road 3335 and another spot on 3330, and we're planning on making oil sand on the stretch that we did on County Road 3335. And we've also started work on County Road 3350. We're actually trying to do a rehab on 3350. And on that rehab, we got our grid shell in, I guess it was about two, three weeks ago. We're using a grid shell. That's what's mounted on our soil compactor.
What did you call it?
A grid shell.
Grid shell?
Yes.
What does that mean?
It's an attachment that goes on our soil compactor. It's got a set of bars welded onto to a drum. They're about an inch wide, about an inch deep, and a zigzag pattern on the drum. And what we're doing with it, we're scarfing existing road, rolling it up, and you take the grid roller and roll over it, and it breaks it back down to smaller pieces.
That's not a new piece of equipment. That's something we've had.
Yes.
That's a new thing.
We thought when we bought soil compactor.
Okay, I just, I don't remember that.
It said roller, the roller they bought.
The roller, okay. Grid, grid shell.
A grid shell that goes on the soil compactor.
Okay.
And we're using it to, basically we're scarfing existing road, rolling it over to a wind road maintainer, and crushing all those pieces up with the grid roller.
Alright, thanks.
And it's working good. I think Dan has seen it. I wish y'all would all go out and take a look at it. I think this is gonna be a good process for us. If this works real good, that's probably one of our primary means of rehabbing the road. But right now, it works real good. We still have some, well, what we're doing, we're basically, you know, we go in there, we actually can break it up and recompact the roadway at the same time with that grid shell. And we're gonna add wrap with it, mix it with the existing materials out there, then we'll come back and make coal mix in place on the existing road. Just like how we used to make all this oil sand, we're gonna make, we're gonna add the wrap and make it like an oil sand and wrap mixture, more of a coal mix. So I think it's gonna work good. We still got some bugs we need to work out of it. I've gotta figure out how to rework the base failures in front of what we do, you know, get them kicked out. We've got a lot of base failures, just on this particular road, but we got a lot of base failures everywhere. I'm hoping we can just add some bottom ash and mix it together with bow bag instead of having to dig them all out. If we dig them all out, it's gonna take a lot more time, and we gotta put the material back into place. So I'm hoping I can come up with a better method of doing that. We added some of the base failures that we reworked. We actually added some bottom ash in with it, mixed it in with bow bag, and it actually worked out pretty good. So I'm hoping I can keep doing that. If it is, that's gonna be a pretty cheap method to use. Of course, we're still working on that, but I think this is gonna be a really good method for us to rehab the road with. But I wish y'all would come out and look at it. That's on County Road 3350. We interviewed four people for a full-time mechanic position this past Thursday and Friday, and hopefully we'll be able to make an offer this week if we can get everybody's approval. And that's about it. Y'all got any questions?
What position do you want to have for me?
What position is the full-time mechanic in Central Barn?
Good. You got some talent in that group before?
Yes. Yeah, I think we've got a lot better applicants this time than we did when we advertised them just as a part-time position. So I think Dan and Phillip look about, we've got one that looks pretty good overall. So I'm hoping we can, hopefully we can get him on pretty quick.
Seal coating efforts, how are you doing on that?
I doubt we seal coat anything this year. We're getting kind of late in the season, and we still need to do a lot more prep on the road before we seal coat it. And right now, we, I still don't know if the chip spreader runs. We've never had time to get it to shop and get it worked on. So we still got a chip spreader problem. We gotta get it worked out before we seal coat it.
Just to be sure, we're all in agreement, what's your understanding of what you can utilize, that special fund that we had established at one time between now and the end of the fiscal year, which is another month from now?
Okay. The way I understood it, I could use it to prep for seal coat, which basically is fixing base failures and any potholes or doing any level up with it prior to the seal coat. Then I can spend it on seal coat.
Okay. And so since we're not spending it on seal coat, that's what caught my attention. I just wanna be sure all of you all are in agreement with that, that he can do it on seal coat prep work. And do you still feel like you're gonna spend the majority of that, if not all of it, between now and the end of September?
I doubt it, just because of what the weather's doing to us.
Okay.
You know, we still got rain proposed coming in for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And if we get rain, we're gonna get a bunch of trees to get it down probably again, so we'll be working trees for a few days. So we're running out of time.
Alright. Any questions, fellas? Thank you for getting that mowing done. That's, that'll make a lot of people happy.
Yeah, and I think the side cutting all the intersections, I think, really, really helped.
I know that pulls, that pulls time out of your crew, but that was a source of complaints, so thank you for doing that. Alright, anyone else? Thank you very much. Item number four, considering possibly approved fees for oil change and routine maintenance to be paid to the maintenance bar. Whose agenda item was this?
It was a question on Terry's.
Okay. And so, by Terry. If you'll recall during our talks here recently regarding Maintenance Department, you know, we're asking Terry, and he is complying, keeping track of his time and writing down exactly where he's spending his time, whether it be working on sheriff's vehicles, county vehicles. And the question came up, and I believe that I heard, we directed Terry to increase the charges that he typically charges, rather than just like a standard one hour to actually bill out for the actual number of hours spent. I know that information got back to Sheriff Ingram. He's concerned about, you know, having to pay more for the maintenance of his vehicles if that's how we're going to calculate it. And obviously, this is a bookkeeping method we're using. The work's still going to be done, how it gets charged, if we feel like there is a benefit to reflecting the actual charges, rather than just a made-up or, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is. But should we bill out actual charges when billing to each piece of equipment, each vehicle? And if so, how do you want Terry to do that? Because Sheriff wants to know that, so that he can have a better idea of how that will impact his budget.
Judge Walton did years ago. Pilgrims have something very similar to this setup. And what we were looking at, we're not trying to make money out of it, we're just trying to break even for each department. What has happened, 20 years we've got behind, we get adjusted as things went up. I don't know what the charge is right now, or what we're charging, but you just have to keep up with your time and what you do, the cost of the material and stuff like this, and average it out. We're not in it to make profit, we're in it to break even.
So do you think it is appropriate to bill closer to actual cost to, for example, the sheriff for his equipment and routine maintenance?
The cost. And I think we should be making money out of it.
Well, I don't think we should leave it up to a mechanic's thing. I've dealt with too many shops. Take your lawnmower to Bobby's Lawn Mower in 70 hours, he'll charge you, then take it to Randalls and see what, and take it to anybody, any shop. Their opinion of letting them decide how many hours that they worked on a unit is wrong. There's a book that tells you what it takes, a mechanic's book that tells you how many hours. I don't know the name of the book right now. And that's why we should go, we shouldn't let an individual mechanic determine how many hours he's gonna take to change oil. We just do, that's all we do, maintenance.
So it should be just a standardized price for an oil change?
Yeah, I don't care about whatever you wanna set it, just make our budget work. Like you said, we don't wanna make a profit, but to let some individual decide how long it's gonna take him to change tires, rotate tires, is absolutely wrong. And there is a standard book for almost all mechanical things that you do on cars. You know what it's called? Somebody must know what it's called. But anyway, that's it. And we should use that rate, not let somebody determine and keep time how long it takes him to do it. Would be an error, I think.
Well, and again, I don't, I don't know that he's asking for anything in particular. He's simply asking for guidance from us. And the amount of work and what it costs countywide is gonna remain the same. But is there an advantage to charging each department? A higher rate perhaps than we have been charging? Is there anything to be gained there?
Well, I don't think there's anything to be gained. If I run a department and he charged me this, I'd wanna shop around and find something cheaper. I'd wanna pedal it around to see. Might put him out of work.
Okay.
I don't think, I think it's-
We don't know, we don't know our actual true cost or our repair that we have.
You can look it up in a book. There's a National Motor or Mechanics book that'll tell you what the standard rate is.
But we don't know what we're costing, how our mechanics plus overhead is working on our equipment right now.
Why not use that standard?
What is our objective? What are we trying to do if we're gonna change what we've been doing?
We're trying to learn how much we're actually spending on all our equipment on repair costs, for one thing. And we're also making it so that some of this stuff could be outsourced at a cheaper price.
Okay.
And I don't think we can tell by the way we've been doing it, in fact. Right now, it's gonna take us a year or so just to figure out what the rate needs to be. You know, right now, we're pretty much at our $30 an hour on our mechanics, on charge on this, next. It's $70 plus overheads. Basically, we want it to break even. We want to get an even jump. Chopping might not make a profit, but it's not running in holes. I think that's all telling us the true actual cost and guidance of repair of equipment.
Well, you're gonna let that individual then determine the cost?
Yeah.
If nobody's gonna say and say, and we're not gonna use a standard thing, what if mechanic, one mechanic takes two hours, another does an hour, you can't let that, you can't charge people-
And to give it the form where we don't need to engage with an outsourced-
Well.
I think what he's telling us is a combination of certain set $35 an hour rate. Like the huge book you're talking about, it should take five hours to do that. We're gonna charge five hours. So it's not even on top of that, just four, nine, it's now, table five. It's gonna be a bad way for guys on 200 times sheets. They say it takes nine hours to do a job, we think it should take five, and they're gonna have to change some of it. Look at the huge book you're talking about, finish my set of dollars rate. What we've been doing for the last few years is we're just charging a non-fee. General County's made a difference at some point. Sheriff doesn't know what it really costs to maintain those cars, 'cause he's getting low into a false sense of security. Well, I get all the hard ones, a hundred dollars a year, but no, you really can't. Something happens and we change, plus the money you're giving another way, that's really not costing us a hundred dollars a year. It's costing us about $1,000 a year because of the whole changes we're doing. We don't even know how many full changes we're doing. It's all part of that system. Having a 200, 80 times sheet, which says what they work. And we're gonna bill from that, and we're gonna evaluate those mechanics from that. Do it all, all. My business, you can't do anything fair. I can go to 200 times, every day, say exactly what they hit their bill, they hit their line, or the same way. You can't tell what they're doing, but she gonna stand over there for business today, and you've got to act something, evaluate it. Are they doing it efficiently, or are they doing it awful? Or they're gonna have to have all these things to ensure it's at a reasonable rate. You're gonna have to use the books, and you're gonna have to have those manuals.
And we agree, there's a standard for the shop time. There's no doubt about that. And I argue maybe that's all we should charge, that the kinds of expenses is all, it's a false and also, so if you get, go carry your vehicle to get it worked on at a repair shop, there's maximum, they're gonna charge you three, three hours for that mechanic to take. So 10 hours to do it, or one hour to do it, you're still gonna be charged that three hours because that's shop time. So, and there's folks out there, knowing, calling, they're calling, they're running to some of our equipment, there's not gonna be a set time or shop time for certain things that they do.
It's not gonna cost the county to get more money if we do it, because it's still a $425 a year out of General County. It's a transfer, I don't just want more money to the sheriff's department, but it's gonna match what we think it really costs to have this stuff done.
So your shop will run closer to break even, rather than showing a huge loss? And while they're running a huge loss, you're showing understated expenses, say, to the sheriff's office? And I think what Roger's trying to do is trying to get a handle on, well, let's see what it costs to maintain this equipment and the sheriff's equipment, and if we can farm out oil changes or tire changes?
Yeah, if somebody's got a problem, runs a lot, they ask, if the sheriff's a big officer.
We're also looking at the time it's run. That way, if it's a money pit, we need to get rid of it. If it, you know, we won't know that unless we keep up with this.
If we have a vehicle that costs $5,000 to replace, and we're spending $75, $100,000, you know, over the course of two years, I would say it's their business to get rid of it.
Wait a minute, you're getting confused with all maintenance. We're talking about just the sheriff's cars and the-
No, we're talking about all.
It's all set fees, all set fees on everything to do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we certainly should have been doing this always, what it costs to, but I'm, we're talking, but I thought this subject was about the routine oil change and procedures that we do for the sheriff. And that's a flat thing, and you let some mechanic start deciding how long it's gonna take him, and we're gonna try to charge based on that. You're gonna have to tell that mechanic, or somebody's gonna have to sit there and watch him, and then if that's what you're gonna determine, or use the book, and that's it. Because you'll get in real trouble.
All he was asking for was how much we need to increase it or what. He just wanna know what price-
Right. Well, if I was Roger, I'd tell him, slow down up there getting them things done, so we can charge a little more.
Well, we get here, we look at the timesheet of that, so we know how much it takes to change an oil car.
Hey, that's-
But we're charging a flat $25, and he, I think, goes to, you want to go to Brandon's van.
They have the, they supply the oil? Y'all supply the oil and the filter?
You know, this, we're gonna do this, and I can see what y'all are doing, because we're actually keeping up, see what he's doing, but the money comes out the same pot.
Sure.
So I don't understand why they're gonna charge extra for that, more of a regular man or a RST anyway. Now, I agree, they do these up there to see what he's doing.
Right. That's how we're keeping up with it, you know, he's got a-
I think, I think the, the other thing is, I think since we're, I was just a, as a general public, I would look at these numbers off, I'm like, what, how much money he costs to keep our sheriff's car? $25 to change an oil, $100 maximum, but it costs anybody?
Well, like I said, they, like I said, they, their sheriff department's buying the oil and filter. What, he just paying, like I said, just a flat? Because I don't know, somebody said the other day, they go to-
Well, that may be, that may be, right.
Right. Right. I just said, know what they would charge?
I'm not sure we're passing that oil cost on the sheriff, because showing on the rent is one of the things. I think, I think, I could check and see if he does it. I need to make sure how he's doing it.
Right.
The piece is showing- Well, they supply oil, and they do it by, they just make different changes, so they're getting oil. I need to make sure, look, they're passing that oil cost on-
Right.
On just the $25, and leaving the oil cost inside the rent.
Right.
Just from where I, we're gonna pay the owner, it's just a more active way of collecting the oil cost on. And it doesn't need money for everything to be moved, $120,000, $25,000 on extra, we'll bump the sheriff's oil gas.
Right.
I'm pretty sure they're charging for the oil, the oil. I don't even see how that's gonna-
So they're saying, the oil change and the filter is $25 for some of those, that's a good, a good deal on it, to do that. Because if you go anywhere else, it's 37 to 60.
And they got, or, or just for heat?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
My suggestion also would be, I could go talk, I don't know if the same people were there years ago that we talked to, but we could talk to pilgrims and see what, what their cost is. Let them, they do their big trucks, their equipment, their small cars, their small pickups, they change that, and they have a set fee set.
Not to interrupt, but you do realize, I don't think most people do, that we, our, my, my employees, they, they change oil on the trucks once a year. They go up to the shop and change oil and breeze them and filter them all the time. They don't, the shop don't do that. They just change oil on the, on the sheriff's cars. And so it's not a exact science. And I, and I really think it's great that where we can do it on rainy days, we can change oil, send them up to the shop and change oil, and they do it all the time. All the precincts do the same thing. So we don't have that mechanic cost for changing oil on anything, and like I said, the sheriff. And I think we should have a flat rate, and if we wanna change it, we think it's too small or too low, we can change it and let it go.
Right.
The other, the other shop, mechanics, timesheets, how long they're working on something, I, I can't believe we don't have it.
But like I said, it's, I think it's $8 they charge them now to do the oil changes?
I'm not sure what they charge, I'm pretty sure it doesn't, or-
Yeah, like I said, but, you know, that $8, like I said, $8.25, you call, you just charge one, one $25 rate for, you know, don't take you that long to, to go do an oil change. You know, you got, you know, don't, you know, don't charge them two or three hours, just charge them one, one hour to do the $35, $25, $35, whatever, to do that car. Nothing over that.
Terry, when you called about this, you said we added, you called it a cost from whatever, it'd be about $22.
For an oil change?
I can't remember what other, that he was including that, but he, whenever he talked about the $25, when I had the $22, I'm not for sure to give him that difference. But that was the number he gave.
My goodness, if it's costing us that, I mean, we need to be farming that out to somebody else. Right.
But like I said, we just looked at it, you know, we put it rate at 35, but other than that, it just, it's a one-time fee, it's not, you know, just one hour, it's not more than two hours. It'll be just $35 for each car to change oil in it.
Well, what I'd like to know through this exercise is just what Christie's telling me. If we decide, you know what, we can send it over here to Billy Craig, or Valvoline, or wherever, and get all of our routine oil changes done and leave him working on big equipment, that might be a smart move.
General, I'm gonna go to, have the timesheet for that year.
Right. But for the time being, this, this agenda item is what are we gonna charge for an oil change? And I don't know what routine maintenance includes. Is that a tire, a tire change?
Rotating tires.
Okay. Well, Roger, do you have an idea on how you, you would like to do this? I mean, ultimately, this will be under your authority. What would you like to do for now?
Well, it'll be the mechanic's weight plus some overhead. For an hour and a half, about that.
But then use the bank, the rate in the book, how many hours it should take?
I don't know, you have to look it up.
Well, you can get that book.
Well, but using that book rate right now doesn't tell us what we need to know. We don't know if we can achieve that, or do better than that, or do worse than that.
But it's not, you're not talking about a profit and loss, it's a break even figure, but I'm saying that, that what we charge for, off to the sheriff is-
You don't put the hour of the page, you put down the actual time that you worked on it, and it was medical, right?
What, do I say that again?
You put down the action time, you worked on that vehicle, plus it's- Again, you're gonna have an individual that can do it in hour and a half, and somebody
can do it in 30 minutes. So, you, well, I, I don't think you ought to charge the sheriff's department based on those facts, you got a sorry mechanic. You, you get one, you don't get it at, at Dodge, they go by the book, how many hours it takes to fix the air conditioner, and that's do certain things, and that's how much they're gonna charge you, that many hours. He might, he might have done it in 30 minutes or an hour, but that's what they're gonna charge you. And I think we should do this-
But that's what he's trying to figure out, is does he have an inefficient mechanic or an efficient mechanic? And just charging them a flat rate doesn't tell us anything. He wants to know, after he can look at some historical information, he can see, you know what, we're averaging $50 in oil change, we either need to change personnel, or we need to, or we need to farm this out to a third party.
But, but you're talking apples and oranges here. You're talking about Ledbetter wanting one thing, and Kerry asking her for something different. He's asking, he's asking what to charge, and Ledbetter's trying to find out if we've got a good employer or not. I mean, it seems like we're talking two different things here.
I don't think we're talking two different things at all.
Well, we, I don't know why. Well, I don't know why, I don't understand why we're making this an issue anyhow. It's a flat, flat charge, and then we can see if he, and if he wants to keep, if he's not keeping time on those mechanics, which we never have, I don't guess, we're doing a bad job of managing them.
But I think we are now.
I don't think we are. I haven't seen a worksheet. Have y'all got a worksheet? Every day they punch it or sign it when they start?
You can go down to the desk and see them if you want to. You go down to the desk and look at them if you want it on his desk.
Yes, they are keeping time now.
Are you looking at them, Roger?
I don't think they're doing that.
What is it showing for the time? Can't you get an average of the thing?
He just charges one deal on the oil change. He's not...
You're not filling out a sheet when he's changing oil?
I'm just saying, he just frightened of one flat fee for $35 to do that oil change.
I think that's the whole question, is what is the dollar amount you're charging? Now, but what you're talking about is how many hours it should take to do that. I think that's what you're getting at. I think all the distinction is, is what should you charge per hour? And what you're saying is, we should divide what he's charging for, because of his salary, you can divide that up with a little bit of, come up with a dollar amount, what you're charging per hour. Now, if it takes him 30 minutes, then he's only going to be charged, or you only should charge half of it. But he needs a dollar, a dollar rate to charge, I think, for it.
We charge for individual cars.
I'm good for your show.
But we've got to have the overhead, seeing if these cars and these, anything, just to see the maintenance on them. Because you've got, the one that's burning oil, we just need to get rid of it. But I'm hoping none of them do. But we, that's the only way we can keep up with this stuff. Is all write it down and go, like I said, it's going to take a year to figure out what's, how we're going.
For now, do you want him to bill out actual hours, times of rate, plus materials, or just time?
Yeah, it's labor should be the actual hours, but still make a little bit of overhead involved in that. Like, if we work two hours on something, we just sit above the back, and we have 70 plus less than the night thing in shop. You know, we've got to figure out how to keep it okay. We don't know what we're going to do, and we have pictures of how many years we've worked, and that many hours, how much, you know, costs us overall on our shop.
So maybe one oil change costs $17, and the next one costs $25, because he had a, he had a stripped drain plug, and he, and he found a bunch of sludge that needed to be cleaned out, and so it took him 50% more time. You'd like to see the actual time charged on each of those two vehicles, rather than just click $30, $30, $30. I agree.
How he, you know, your time and your work on these vehicles?
I thought he was.
He is, he's got, he writes on the invoice.
Except oil changes.
He writes everything he does down. He puts on the invoice, and he writes it in a tablet. He keeps up every day what he's doing.
By, by piece of equipment.
Everything, yes.
But at the time, you said a while ago, he's only charging a flat rate on the cars. He's putting a flat amount of time. He's not putting the actual time he starts on a car, on a sheriff's car, and then put this guy when he gets through? Or I thought you said he was just using a flat rate on it?
Well, I'm just saying, if you just use a flat rate for one hour, you know, instead of having to charge, you know, if it takes him 20, 30 minutes, charge him half of it. But we're going to still, we need a price that we can save 30 minutes, cut it in half, and say, that's what we're going to charge him. If it just takes 30 minutes, that's half of 35, you know?
We're doing two things now.
Right. We just need to, looking at a rate to charge, that way we can go by what we have to do. You know, if he has to do breaks and all that, it's going to run over an hour.
Do you do breaks on?
Yes.
On sheriff's cars?
Yes.
That's another work order.
When you say a fixed rate, you're talking about a fixed hourly rate, not a fixed...
Right, or the fixed rate of what we need to charge them. That's what we need to look at, because it, you know, that way we can keep up with the cost.
Well, we know we're paying him about $25 an hour. So how much more than that should we allocate to his hourly charge?
He gets federal...
We're getting there.
...time to pay for that $30.
Well, then you have, you got tools and stuff like that. We're the only mechanic shop now, we talk about wages with these other people in town. We're the only people that furnish all the tools for our mechanic. Most mechanics have to furnish their own hand tools. But we, we're spending the taxpayers' money, so we don't get nitpicky about that kind of stuff.
If we know we're paying him $25 an hour, we got payroll taxes on top of that, we got overhead on top of that, I like $35. Until we have history that tells us different, let's go with $35 an hour.
But he still has to be the actual time that he works.
Right, yes.
If it only takes him 15 minutes to that sheriff's car, he goes down, squad car number 752, 4:05 to 4:15, that's what he, that's how he gets to be on the time sheet.
Times $35.
Those $5, $30.
Plus materials? No, not materials?
Well, we can charge them materials, but if they have a little bit of color or something, they have to charge them a color.
Right.
Yeah, that's actual, that's expert.
Okay. Well, is that Terry's responsibility to put a price tag on sheriff vehicle number three and allocate that to the sheriff? Is that, I mean, is he doing that kind of detailed billing?
Yes.
So all we need to know is an hourly rate?
Everybody knows he bills, labor, he bills the period.
Okay. So in this, in this item number four, we need to establish an hourly rate, period. I like $35, if anybody wants...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All right, we got a motion here to charge $35 an hour by our mechanics for, uh, oil changes, routine maintenance, et cetera. That'll be the, that'll be the labor charge, including overhead, not counting, uh, parts and materials. So that's a motion, $35. Seconded by Dana Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so sheriff, understand that you may now see higher maintenance costs being allocated to you, but like you've heard Carl say, we'll even that out. We'll reduce our maintenance shop budget and increase your budget, so that we have a better feel for what is the true cost of maintaining your vehicles. Not to punish you, or to cause you to bust your budget, but simply to help us establish what the true cost is. And then from that, perhaps we'll find ways to save money by maybe farming out brake jobs and tire changes and oil change. Or we may decide, you know what, we've got a heck of a deal here. But until we get some good detailed bookkeeping over a period of time, we won't know that. All right.
What do you think about Roadbury and Sign York?
Say that again?
David Johnson, money by Roadbury for the same purpose. That's right. Can we hear it? Yes. Mine's only from 50 to 100,000 these years.
For your maintenance?
Correct. So we, um, if we're talking, should we have to transfer $105,000 to the maintenance form? Because it's better to be charging that, and I'm covering your cost, and I'll just move that $105,000 as a number.
Okay. All right, well, one step at a time.
The help's on its way.
To do that, it does have to be, it's a time to be on the way to go.
Right. Yes, we can, we can set with him.
And it might be that I forget to put that on my sales sheet also.
Well, like I said, we...
That's another issue. We're working on it. We'd like that to be programmed, isn't it?
All right, I've got to go wash my hands now. All right, let's move on to the next two items. We're fortunate to have Charles Smith from the Mount Pleasant Industrial, or I mean, the Mount Pleasant Industrial IDC, Industrial Development Corporation. That will, still will we call you? It sounds important. All right, Charlie has requested that in order for this thing to flow better, we need to flip-flop item number five and six. So we're going to begin with item number six, and that is considering possibly approve a revocation of property tax abatement that we previously approved for Prefort Manufacturing and PMCI Properties. So break that down for us, Lehman.
I will.
Okay.
The, or I will try. I had to broken down myself, because the, uh, Comptroller's Office, and it's in the wording and in the agreement. State law prohibits tax abatements on items for more than 10 years. That's been a fact for years and years. We rarely do 10-year tax abatements. So it hasn't been a problem here. With Prefort Manufacturing, in late, in 2015, we approved, uh, tax abatements for a total of six structures, and for equipment that went into those structures. So there was no problem. They, because of the volume and the size of their overall expansion, we did a 10-year abatement. Then...
That was to begin in 2016?
That's correct. And those were tax abatements that began in, uh, that it was done in 2015 late. It actually began in 2017.
Because of construction delays.
Yeah, exactly, to plan for construction. So, uh, we had some significant delays, and with those delays, Prefort came to us, and they said, would you modify your tax abatement agreement, so that we can take advantage of those? Specifically, and the court has already approved those abatement agreements, or modifications, I should say, specifically the structure that they're building now that went over the Union Pacific Railroad. They had planned to get that done, but because of working with Union Pacific and all the nuances that had to be done, it was significantly delayed. Same thing with their tube mill, which was a huge expenditure. They bought a piece of equipment in Mexico and an existing steel facility, and they had to get it disassembled out of Mexico and into the plant here. Major delays. So in both those cases, they asked us to modify the existing tax abatements, so that they could still get 10-year abatements on those items. Well, we modified them, city approved it, county approved it, sent it to the appraisal district, and what it appeared then, on the agreement itself, the agreement extended beyond 10 years. There was no single item that had a tax, excuse me, that had a tax abatement on it that was more than 10 years, but the agreement itself extended beyond 10 years.
We just stretched it out one more year, instead of moving it forward.
Exactly. So in working with the appraisal district and to get all this cleaned up, what they suggested was, let's just do away with the abatement agreements that we have. Let's do new abatement agreements with the new timeframes, and regroup the six structures and this equipment, so that nothing changes as far as the benefit to Prefort, nothing changes as far as the revenues received to the city and county, it's just in a new form. And so that's what you see in these next three items. The first item is the revocation of the previous tax abatement agreements. Then we go through and we enter a tax abatement agreement on five structures that are basically ready to be, the abatements ready to be in place, were the 2017 taxes.
Okay.
Then we go into these two items, the railroad crossover and the tube mill that are now picked up in 2018 and go forward. So that's what we have. It's, uh, takes up your time, it takes up their time and our time, but we are staying within the confines of what the law says we can do.
The dollars stay the same, the paperwork gets changed due to a technicality. Now the CAD is happy, but there's no change in...
That's correct.
...the amount of savings passed on to Prefort, and no change in the amount of revenue that the taxing entities bring in.
Absolutely correct. What we didn't want to do, what we wanted to do is move forward with what the city and the counties intent was, without penalizing Prefort. And it has become a, just a morass of confusion, but I think this will take care of it and get it cleared up.
Okay. So first item, let's take care of number six, and that is to... Revoke the previous property tax abatements. I have a motion by Commissioner Fields to do that.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor of the approval of item number five, to revoke these previous...
Five, six.
Okay, what I'm changing to, I've renumbered mine.
Okay.
Number six, motion and a second to revoke previous property tax abatement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we'll back up to item number five, and that is to consider and possibly approve a new, I'll call it, property tax abatement agreement with Prefort Manufacturing Company, Inc., and PMCI Properties. Commissioner Fields makes that motion.
Second.
And Commissioner Riddle seconds that. All in favor of the approval of item number five to approve this new property tax agreement with Prefort? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Charlie, let's move on down to item number seven, which is also to consider and possibly approve a property tax abatement agreement with Prefort and PMCI. And this is, we had two of these agreements, and so we're redoing two of these. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Fields, again, makes the motion.
Second.
And Commissioner Riddle, second. So we're on number seven, and this is the second of the two property tax abatement agreements that we're redoing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lastly, item number eight, consider and possibly approve a property tax agreement which offers a partial abatement of property taxes for a period of three years. This one deals with Newlywed Foods, has nothing to do with Prefort.
Thank you. And I appreciate your time and consideration on these previous items. Newlywed Foods is, this is an, excuse me, this is an entirely new project. This is, by the way, their fourth expansion since locating in Mount Pleasant. They're thrilled, they, with their business here. They're shipping product all the way to South America, Mexico and California, from our plant, and continue to grow. So this is their fourth abatement. This creates 15 new jobs. This is an investment, um, for a new production line. This will not change the exterior of the building. All of this is expansion within the existing plant, but it's a new blending and production line. This investment and job creation qualified them for a partial abatement for three years. And I have said this before, when I've talked about this, this only applies to the new equipment. This has no impact at all on the building and the equipment that's in there in place today. It is only the new equipment that receives the tax payment. And it is what we call a clawback provision. They have to notify us when the equipment is in place, and then for the next three years, they have to show us the employment to show that the full-time jobs were created. So that's the way that works, and the abatement applies only to that new equipment. And I'll be happy to answer...
And if they don't achieve and maintain those additional job spots, clawback, we get money back?
That's correct. That's correct.
Which has never happened in one of these.
Has not ever happened. And, uh, what we do when we work with the company, we urge them to be realistic, to not overplay, and, but you develop a level of trust there where they don't have to be too aggressive in their approach, and they can, they can grow, and they know the county's there to support them.
What's the dollar value on this new equipment?
Well, I was trying to read it and talk at the same time, and that's very dangerous for me. It is. I've got, it's roughly $510,000, $510,786 new equipment. To create 15 jobs. One thing for the county to know is... One thing for the county to know in, in working with these food production companies, uh, their equipment runs much higher than it does in some of the other industries. And, uh, in the past, I've said, we need to start looking more at these investments than we do at the job creation, because the, both are important to us, absolutely. But these companies are, in order to stay competitive, they're applying new technologies, et cetera, so that they will create fewer jobs. That way, in a downturn, they don't have that many to lay off, and that's a good thing.
So could we maybe look in the future and see a situation where you had a million-dollar piece of equipment that might even reduce jobs? And, and we still benefit because we get a million dollars on the tax roll, but we want to incentivize them to do that on some criteria other than just job creation?
It is time for us to look at our tax abatement policy. Now, our incentive policy that the city approves and the city, uh, my board approves, looks at job creation, and that's a key component because those are salaries that go into the community to buy groceries and new cars and furniture and that sort of thing. But it would be my recommendation, as we look at a new tax abatement policy, that we look only at the equipment cost, because that's really, that's what we're abating. That's, and it is the company's desire to bring in, and there is a specific benefit to the city and county, schools, et cetera, when that investment is made. And that would be my recommendation that we look at, and we can certainly talk about it, because there's pluses and minuses to every issue, but, uh, as we narrow it down to just tax payments, like that would be my recommendation.
But we'll let the IDC begin that discussion when your, when the time is right?
In the past, they don't have to coincide, but in the past, the city and the county's tax abatement, uh, has been the same policy. They don't have to, but, uh, it, it certainly makes it, uh, more convenient for the business to understand it when they do. But I'll be happy to answer any questions about this if you, if you have them.
Okay, and this is just a three-year abatement. What are those percentage abatements in the last three years?
Ninety percent in year one, seventy-five percent in year two, and fifty percent in year three.
Year four, we're getting full tax.
Full tax, that's correct.
Okay. All right, need a motion on item number eight, or a question?
Fifteen workers, plus the-
In the, in this case-
What we're trying to do is help them pay for the equipment, so encourage them to do it, because it's going to add jobs.
And tax value.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fields to approve this agreement with newlyweds.
Second.
Commissioner Applewhite, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Charlie, I think we're done with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll get this signed and have it ready for you this afternoon. Item number nine, approve the order of the election for November 7th, 2007. Chrissy's here. Chrissy, I'll give you the podium.
Um, I have turned in an order to approve the amendment election for November.
Okay, so you're going to vote between the hours of eight and five, beginning on the 23rd of October and ending on the 3rd of November, and that'll be, what day is this out? You got a Monday through a Friday? Are you going to have any weekend voting in between there?
Not for this election. We won't do weekend voting.
Okay, so Monday through Friday, and then Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Two weeks of early voting and then election day.
And I'm looking at my calendar here. Twenty-three to 10:27, the 30th through the 3rd, okay?
It's October.
Yeah. Through the 3rd, okay. All right, so what are we deciding here on number nine as far as the order of election? We're just ordering the calling of an election for-
It's November 7th.
-November 7th, which includes some early voting as usual. All right? Anything we need to know about this? What are we going to be voting on here?
Um, they have not, as far as I have seen, released the amendments yet, but there's usually a list of amendments that they vote on.
They have, they have releases, there's seven, I'm sure.
There's seven. There's seven amendments that will be voted on.
Plus the ponies may add.
Propositions number one through seven, okay. And those are fixed at this point, Sue? They're not, that's not going to change?
No, they're set by the legislature, so there are seven.
And that's all there's going to be? We know what they are now, it's not going to climb to eight or nine?
The only difference is sometimes the parties attach-
Referendums?
-the, for consensus of people, not that it'll change law.
Okay. Yeah, do you think there's going to be anything like that? Is it looking like there might be something like that? Or a referendum, is that what we call it, or?
Well, yeah, we should call it a referendum, it's a different thing. Um, I'm just trying to think of one, if it's a tax office, like it's all taxes or something in that nature, but it's more of a party thing.
Okay. So at this time, it looks like it's state of Texas propositions one through seven, and that's it, right?
That's it.
Okay. So we need to approve the ordering of this, or the calling of this election?
Yes.
I'll make-
Motion's made by Commissioner Fields.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then, uh, item number 10 is, uh, to approve our polling locations for November 7th.
I'm proposing to consolidate boxes for November. If you go back and look at 2015's amendment election, we only had about 2,500 voters, and most of those were during early voting. This would save us a little bit of money. I don't have the numbers of how much we would save, but cutting it down to eight or nine boxes as opposed to nineteen, I think would be better.
You've cut it down to eight and combined here?
Yes.
Is this exactly like what we've done in the past, or is this a little different?
It's a little bit different, and Sue and I were talking earlier, and we might initially change a few of the boxes around, but the ones, the locations that I have on the right that say that are going to be open, that would stay the same. But it's pretty much what we've done in the past, when we've consolidated in the past.
Okay, so you tacos out of it?
Just for November. It won't change anything like next year during the primaries. It won't change anything then. It's only for this amendment election.
Where do they go?
They'll go to Sugar Hill.
That going to cause mutiny?
Yes, it's going to cause mutiny. Because like I said, you know, I've talked to them over there, they said that, you know, you know, they're not going to drive to town or to Sugar Hill, because, you know, to vote. They, they got the cavalry over there, that they-
And it's going to cause mutiny whichever way you go. If we send Sugar Hill to Talco, they're going to complain. If we send Talco to Sugar Hill, they're going to complain. We can leave both boxes open?
But you're not going to get any, you're going to lose votes and stuff.
There's not a meeting on location, no.
No.
There is.
Set up a portable building halfway. Unless you want to build a cabin out there.
Yeah.
Well, is this important enough that we need to do that?
Yes. Because, you know, you could, I know what they feel in Talco about it.
Talco and, uh, what's, what's number three? Box three. Bridges Chapel?
Bridges, Ch- Chapel and Pony. That's another one that you're going to-
Yeah, Bridges, Talco can vote at Bridges Chapel and, uh, Sugar Hill can vote at Argo.
I mean-
They have to come to town to go to the grocery store and go to the doctor. Doesn't make any sense.
I agree with you, believe me.
But you don't still these people out there, they, they're not going to do it.
I don't agree with you. People haven't voted places, they made it very clear to me last year, they want their voting places.
Even on a down year, when we've got two weeks of early voting?
What they told me.
Okay, well, this is all, it doesn't matter to me, I think it's-
I make a motion, we approve this, uh, list that Chrissy has.
I'll second it. All right, important vote here, guys. Vote what you think you need to do, but you've got a motion and a second here to go with what Chrissy has proposed here. A, a slow, a low turnout vote, two weeks of early voting, eight to five, everybody comes to town. Yes, we're going to do without a couple of polling locations, but, um, we ask for their cooperation and patience this year. So with the motion and second, I'll call for approval on this. All in favor of it, the way Chrissy has presented this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're not quite there. What do we need to do to get this vote?
We table and then get the people at Talco, and then, because I guarantee you get a turnout at Talco, come over here and argue about it. I guarantee you-
What I'm trying to avoid. If we just added the Talco, what about the other one that you said was a potential problem?
Argo and Pony?
No.
I mean, uh, Blodgett and Pony? There's nobody here to argue about those, though, so, and we've combined them before.
So it's the, but you've got one here at Pony and Blodgett, what's the, uh-
No, Pony and Bridges Chapel, I'm sorry. Two and three, the first one.
Say, I don't think Blodgett's going to Pony.
It's Pony and Bridges Chapel that we would put-
So we're asking the Bridges Chapel folks to come to Pony?
Yes.
Is that okay?
It's not going to work.
Not going to work, mutiny?
Uh, I think so, on that one, I mean, we can go more issues.
Picketers, picketers and riots?
They can run for me.
Pony and Bridges Chapel and then the city center.
We can close both places and bring them both into town, that's-
City center.
But we're trying, is there something magic about this eight, eight places?
No.
We're just trying to be efficient.
The ones, we just used them before, and it seems like a good location to, when you put the boxes together, but, I mean, we've actually, like on Pony and, uh, Bridges Chapel, we've actually done the opposite and closed Pony and Bridges Chapel, and that was, that was terrible.
And some of our, some of our arguments in the past was that you had difficult time getting, uh, election workers in Talco, but they all showed up and said, I'll volunteer this time.
[laughing]
All right, well, we can, we can vote on this and have a bunch of people show up at the next election, or we can change this now. What do y'all want to do?
If we just added Talco with, uh, to this list, would you be happy, Dana?
Well, yeah, that wouldn't get on, get the stuff my tail.
Who gets chewed on if we don't?
Because I know the whole, the mayor and everything else is, they, they done voiced their opinion last time.
Yeah. Well, what about the folks at Bridges Chapel? Do we have, how big of a problem do we have there?
Are you at Bridges Chapel or Pony?
I'm at Pony and better stay at Pony.
There were a lot of people at Pony last time that were here that wanted to make sure that Pony stayed open.
That's what I'm saying, can you judge your own mouth?
All right. Somebody want to make a motion that we add to this list, Talco and Talco alone?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Dana makes the motion, uh, Al seconds that. All in favor of going with Chrissy's list as it is presented with the addition of a ninth location at Talco, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? We got a, a nay from Commissioner Fields. Okay, motion passes, and hopefully we can massage that decision for those affected. Um, thank you for trying and being efficient with our, oh, oh, um, one location only.
Yes, just one.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Okay, Sheriff, you're up. Item number 10, I mean, number 11 is consider and possibly approve receiving and accepting money from pilgrims, uh, for the sheriff's office in order to purchase a new drone.
Um, well, actually, this is just to turn the application to them, but what pilgrims does, they have reached out to law enforcement, not only have to the city, the constables, and, uh, and they want to get us that might be our budget such as this, um, and this drone, it would greatly, greatly help us.
That's what you're thinking you would do with the money, but you're not, you don't have to.
No, it's what we have, we have to get approval from y'all first.
They have an earmark that, they're just saying, we'd like to give you some money.
Well, yeah, but we have to get, we have to, we want to make sure you guys don't let them accept it.
Right, and the amount is?
A little $20,000. What this is, is a drone-
Twenty thousand?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is a pretty hot day, it's-
No, how much are they donating?
Do I?
Are they going to donate 20,000?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
I've had, I've, I've had some questions ask me about the last one, they give the constables, uh, some company did, uh, was that pilgrims again?
Pilgrims.
That you're, uh, buying favors, it's not legal or good business to, to us to do that, to take, uh, certain people donations from?
Well, I guess that's why it ought to be voted on.
Yeah, they bought, they bought the city one, actually, they got two of them. Uh, you know, they, they, the city got one, the constables got their, got their guns, uh, um, they, they said just wait, go back to the community, you know, they never, they've never asked me for it, but they're in the city, I've never, we never had to deal with pilgrims, but, uh-
Well, I do think this is why this stuff should be voted on, because I can see how this would be a, a way to, um, encourage help for a particular company.
Especially in a, in a wooded area, you can't tell what's out there.
We, we use a search warrant, what this is, it's got, it's a, it's a, it's a high-tech drone, it's got map vision, so we're running a search warrant, step in the fly above and see who all is outside of the residence.
I think we're all in agreement that, of the use of a drone. I think what Commissioner Riddle is bringing up is, do you all have a problem with accepting a, a substantial dollar amount here from a company, uh, or does that cause you to feel obligated to that company? I mean, I, that's the reason stuff like this is voted on, so I certainly appreciate your need for that, and I'm willing to accept that money. I believe I can keep a, an objective, uh, opinion and not let this affect me, but that's just me.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion is made, but, well, that, is that the cost of a drone these days? 20 grand?
Well, for one like this, you gotta remember, get, uh, this thing, like we're flying it at night, and, and let's say we're on, we're, that's like a drug line, you can, you can focus this thing on the car, it'll follow wherever it goes, and it'll, it'll actually bite instead, we don't have to man it, and it'll go around trees, towers, it's, it's got radar built in it, because it's pretty expensive where it would crash. And so it's, it helps a lot for women to sit there and actually fly and-
All right, motion is made to accept this donation from pilgrims for the sheriff's office in the amount of $20,000. Motion by Commissioner Applewhite. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item 12, consider and possibly approve a resolution approving submission of a grant application for the rifle armor project to the office of the governor. Let me read this here, it's relatively short.
Hey, Judge, on that last one, remember now, they're not promising us the money. They, they have this open for law enforcement of, uh, for the city and county and first responders. This is just, you guys send your approval, so this don't make them give it to us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Like applying for grants.
Yeah, just like applying for grants, whatever.
And neither are we approving the purchase of the drone, then? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. And this other, now, this is from the governor, this is, uh, what it is, these are plates that will stop the high-powered bullets, the 223, as such, from penetrating our vest, and, uh, this, this is taken from the state of Texas, the governor's office put this out, and, and so, uh, we just need approval to accept this.
What's the potent, what's the potential, uh, of the size of this grant?
You know, I think this one here, they, they, they don't care, but we haven't paid for, I think it's around $10,000.
On this resolution, it doesn't indicate amount. I imagine it's one of those where, you know, they see how many applications they get before they can allocate it based on size of the population and need.
The governor's office, what, the way it looks, the way it read when we did it, they're pretty much an offer to-
Okay. But the idea is to get an upgraded vest?
Yeah, we do, yeah, well, it's actually not the vest, we're not getting to a vest, it's just a plate that's going in the vest-
Okay.
-that, that we need to stop, uh, like a high-powered rocket.
Okay. All right, so all this is, is a resolution, uh, authorizing us to, uh-
It may not be $1,000. It may not be about ten thousand.
Just to submit a request to get this money. There's no, uh, there's no match on behalf of the county, so we've got nothing to lose here.
I'll make the motion we approve.
Okay, motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve this resolution, second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, set that aside. I do need your signatures on this, so I'll pass that down for that resolution. All right, food service provider, item number thirteen, open review bids, possibly approve for a food service provider to run the kitchen, and I'm hearing talk of, of tabling, how far do you want to take this today? Do you want to go ahead and open the bids and take a look at them, and then give you some time to review, uh?
Yeah, let's just see, we need to first, it's the same company you got.
We've got some samples here that we're going to get to try.
There is six, two, three, that's, I believe, was the name.
Yeah, one, yeah, I need to. We serve bill, man, we push us cheaper bids, we just want to make sure that they're.
Who did this? Who's doing it now?
What's the company currently providing for you?
I've got some many companies come in, I can't, I can't remember which one.
It's the same one you've been using for years, isn't it?
Uh, part of the main.
Go ahead.
It's not.
Seven.
No, it's not seven.
Five star?
No, it's not.
Let me ask you this, before we open this, are you happy with your current provider, and if they're not one of these, do you want to get a bid from them, or do you assume that this is, that they're included?
I assume one of our, the current provider is, is one of them, or what is, what is the other?
You've got Five Star Correctional Services, uh, this is shipped to me from Beeman Avenue in Dallas, Texas, that's all I.
What's the other, who's the other one from?
The other one is from, and it's even less indicative, this is, uh, B-I-N-E-O dot com, this is in Memphis.
Summit proposal for jail food services.
Well, these companies change names all the time, that, that Summit, I think, will be the one we have there.
Well, before I potentially poison this process for another bidder, we can table the whole thing until you got in a bid, just in case your current provider is not submitted.
Well, what we need to make sure, though, is regardless who bids on it, we want to make sure that, that it's in a contract that they can't go up on us, but a certain amount, uh, so that they can't get the bid and then shoot the prices up, there's, there's things we need to look at that, uh.
She's going to go find something now, let's, uh?
Just wait on that.
Yeah, let's, let's oversee property sales here, we'll come back. All right, we're going to skip over item number thirteen, we're going to go to item fourteen and fifteen, I'll do these one at a time, and this is your usual request coming from Tim Taylor to consider selling some, uh, property that we've had a hard time getting sold and back on the, uh, back on the property rolls, so let me tell you about this first one.
Do you got a buyer? Oh, did he have a buyer, and, does he have a buyer, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to tell you about this first one. This is number fourteen, uh, Lot Four, Block Fourteen in the Sunrise Edition, previously struck off the tax roll. Okay, Dear Brian, a bid for the purchase of the above referenced tract of land, which had been previously struck off at a delinquent tax auction back in October of fifteen, uh, to the city of Mount Pleasant as trustee for the taxing entities of Titus County, has been received by the city from Michael Bryson. The city has accepted this bid of three hundred fifteen dollars and will sell the property with the consent of the other entities. The sales price for the above lot is less than the judgment amount of six hundred forty-four dollars. That was just the judgment amount in the, in the way of delinquent taxes, and the appraised value, uh, twenty-one hundred and eighteen dollars. So you're way off that mark, but obviously it was a difficult piece to get sold, we didn't even, uh, have a, a buyer in the last auction. Here's an opportunity to get it back on the tax rolls, albeit at a pretty low price, three hundred and fifteen dollars, this is a Longview, Texas buyer, um.
Make that motion.
Okay, so Commissioner Fields feels like that's good enough, and, uh, second by Commissioner Riddle to sell this property described in item fourteen for three hundred fifteen dollars. City has approved this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll go to the second piece here, which is, uh, item fifteen, this is lots seven through twelve B in the Anderson Edition, also previously struck off property. Um, a bid for the purchase of the above referenced, previously struck off in March of thirteen, so four years ago, a bid's been received from Felix Valenzuela, the city has accepted a bid of six thousand dollars and will sell the property with the consent of the other entities, so we're just one that has to approve this. The judgment was seven thousand dollars against this piece of property, the appraised value twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty, so this was multiple, multiple lots, and this was the one where we had previously received and approved a bid. We had another, this same piece of property we dealt with back a year ago, September twenty-sixth of sixteen, we accepted a six thousand dollar bid on this same piece of property from a buyer, last name Ledesma, they apparently never came through with the money, so here we have another six thousand dollar bid. So we approved it once, anybody want to approve it again?
Make, make a motion we approve.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite, second by Commissioner Riddle to sell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's jump back to number thirteen. Christie, what'd you find?
Uh, Summit, I think we have now, it was ABL, they changed the name like we did a year ago.
Okay, so we're currently dealing with Summit, and we have a bid from Summit.
They, they felt, tell me that, uh, they changed the name to Summit, but ABL is who I'm familiar with, but, uh, but it's the same company, what it is, is Summit bought, purchased them and bought them out, so, but it's still. Now, if this other company's cheaper, I certainly don't mind them with a cheaper bid, but I will ask, we table it for the next meeting, so we can have time to investigate them, uh, make sure.
You don't want, you don't want to table opening the bids, go ahead, open in these two bids, and then give you a chance to.
If Summit, if Summit, uh, has the better bid, we just go with Summit, we, we'd like to have a chance to investigate.
Just open while you're, uh, so that I can be reading this while you're opening them.
That's the reason, that's the reason they trust you, that not so tough.
Can you table?
He scares me, I thought you'd cut your face.
This looks like all promotional material, let me see if I find a letter in here.
Thought there's going to be a meal in there.
I didn't say.
He gonna have to, it'll take him two weeks to look through all that.
I know what they do, I'm just using the contract, to make sure it's not.
Hello? You gonna have to read the fine print, see what it says, if we'll do it, if won't do.
Jack, after a year.
Okay. And I don't know how many meals, I don't know if this is weekly or daily, but it ranges, uh, from one to eighty meals, they're showing to be determined, from eighty-one to ninety meals, uh, two point, two dollars and forty-three cents, value added pricing, two dollars and thirty-three cents. That's, so that's on the high end, and that can get down as low as, you know, you get over a hundred people, that goes down to about two dollars and fourteen cents, so why don't we let you study these particulars here? That's just an idea, and let you, let you study whether or not there's any way that they can raise the pricing, we'll leave that, table that, but let's, let's give the, the votes.
Yeah, what we've done is, uh, in the, in the past, with the contract, they can't go with a certain amount, depending on the, you can take your back to raise.
Yeah. Christie will hear you those points.
I'm not hearing that word, so.
Is this a, have you ever dealt with Five Star before?
No, sir, it's, it's, it's.
How long's these contracts usually fall? For a year?
We came to a five.
Yeah, just in.
What have we typically done, how many years?
I think three, you can go, go as long as you want, or five years, and I think three years. I don't think we need, I don't think we need for that, because it's, it's, it's cheap.
It makes it hard.
Please be able to seal, Judge, so we can see over now, if you can't find, you need to, you know, we're, we're, we're.
They've got a special Thanksgiving and Christmas deal. It's pretty good.
We can just meet all at the jail, we'll leave it to jail.
They're breaking this down into inmate meals, a dollar fifty-two, officer meals, a dollar fifty-two, trustee meals, a dollar seventy-seven, um, I guess you'll have to dig into the details to see if that's any, any number you have to meet, but, I mean, those are definitely cheaper than this, but you, you want to see what you get.
Well, so I want to call, make sure the, the answer to the reference is worth it, we're going to give you the job.
All right, so two bids, one from Five Star and one from Summit, um, you know, do you want to just, do you want to have multiple copies, do you want to leave these here, what you want to do?
You don't want to tell them my copies, I can give them to them.
No, not that old book, because there, there may be more than one or two pages that's pertinent information, these just look like, these just look like a few copies of that.
Yeah.
So we'll give you all three.
Because these were sealed, they didn't say.
Okay, so sheriff's asking us to table any decision to give him time to review the bid.
I might get motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite to table the award, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're down to sixteen to talk about our construction and repair projects, I'll turn this over to our, uh, construction, uh, project supervisor, Commissioner Riddle.
Okay, the west wall of the annex, that, that's the, uh, uh, wall behind where the new people moved in, the printing office, they're doing the, uh, stucco, redo the stucco, and we, uh, have asked Swepco to remove the, a lot of wires hanging down to the ground, and they, they're waiting to give me approval, uh, to give us a pro, what we, they can put a, a conduit down the pole into the ground, and we can take that, that stuff off, the west wall of the building, on the street side, and put it around back. We, uh, we, uh, we have a, like, I've talked to one electrical contractor, and Jones has brought one out to see it, and they've looked at it, but we have to wait now on Swepco. They come out one day last week, and he said he'd have to talk to another guy, the man from Swepco, and he said that that's what he would recommend we could do, and we could either then decide whether we want to go underground, all the way over to adult probation, but I don't think it would be, uh, cost effective, to, we, they'd be just okay from the top of that pole over to the top of the building, in the back of that building, uh, on that corner, we call it the, uh, Caddell Building or whatever, behind the fridge shop.
The currently the storage room. So that, that does two things, that, for one, it makes it easier to do that stucco repair work, and then it does, uh, a lot of beautification to that very visible wall there.
Right.
It's got a lot of old, ugly, uh, wiring on it.
Some of them aren't even hooked up.
Yeah, it's a good haircut back there, and then maybe we relocate that, so you got a couple of folks that have got to weigh in on this, Swepco to tell us their cost, and then we'll have to talk to an electrician who might play a role in, in some of that as well.
Right.
Okay, good.
Then the north courthouse entrance, a water leak, uh, we got the company that, uh, Jimmy recommended, and they, uh, they said that, uh, they would, uh, they're looking at it, and Jones has got somebody that's looking at, at it to seal it, put it back, uh, to stop the water from going down, and, but I don't have either one of those, uh, bids yet. Uh, and the north annex entry, uh, door, that's the third thing, uh, Taylor, uh, Brown didn't want to give me a bid, or said they would, but they never have, so, uh, Taylor's made that bid, and it's, uh, five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars, and to remind you, that's the bid, the glass doors for the handicap going into the corner of the building, uh, it's, it don't work, to put one door in the middle so that people can get in it and close, close the glasses. He's got material for, uh, forty-two hundred dollars of, of glass, and the labor and, uh, the opening, the forty-two hundred, then the side doors, which will be just glass, a thousand seventy-five, and then five hundred dollars labor, for fifty-seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and it's the only bid I've got, and, and, and the advantage is, he did those partitions inside the courthouse, uh, where Judy Cook used to be, the glass in there, so he's familiar with it, he worked for Malum Glass, who did that job, and he, he knows what, what he's doing, so I'd recommend that we, uh, give him the job to fix that.
And that'll replace the two, that, that, we're just talking about the outside layer of glass.
Right.
The inside is currently a single, um.
A double.
Pair of doors that are right there in the center, and we're going, on the outer layer, we're going to move the two outside opener doors, make those fixed, and move the interior to where it matches up with the second layer, is that right?
That's right, so handicap people can get in, you can't get a wheelchair, you got to, a guy with, in a wheelchair has to have help to come in that side door and then get over to the middle door, because they're so close, they open up, uh, at, at, well, you got to have the one in the middle open, the second door inside, before you can get in, in a wheelchair.
Are we accomplishing anything else other than making it easier for handicap folks?
No.
You're promptly obeyed, uh, handicap.
Well, they said that we.
I don't think we're out of compliance, I think we're grandfathered in.
No.
We saw wheelchair, they couldn't get to there the other day, they had.
Well, I'm just saying legally, we don't have to do this.
I don't think so either, I think we're out, uh, we've did it so long ago, the date is, makes us not have to do it, uh.
I, I.
Right.
I, I like the next.
Is, are you considering any tinted glass or any current exterior color to the, to the metal, anything like that?
No, he didn't, he, uh, I understood it'd be just like the, what we've got in the rest of that building on the right, I, I don't know why we'd want to keep it that way, hope, hopefully we're not going to keep that inside the building.
Well, do you want to take, uh, an opportunity to, to improve the look with a darker, you know, and I think that's an aluminum color on there right now, and whether or not it needs to be tinted, I don't know how much direct sun that gets, I don't think it gets a lot, I'm, I'm happy with it the way that it is. I'm, I'm happy with it the way that it is.
Well, I am too. People, I'd rather have it lighted than tinted, or the glass, but that's just...
Maybe for safety, it shouldn't be tinted.
Right.
Okay, $5,775 to make this replacement, so we're, uh, doing something that we're not legally required to do, but we are making it more handicap-friendly. It's not electric doors or anything, but it does make, uh, getting in easier, so if you all wanna do that, I need a motion.
There's no hurry, I mean...
Do you wanna check on anything else, or are you okay with that?
No, I, I don't think I, I mean, if we get something else, I'll be surprised.
Do you think we oughta do this?
Do I now?
Do you think we oughta do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do.
All right, you put that in the form of a motion? Or you?
I make a motion, uh, that we do take that, uh, quote.
Commissioner Fields approves the quote from Taylor Glass, $5,775 to replace the north annex, uh, replace and reconfigure the north annex entry doors. Need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Riddle, all in favor of, uh, moving forward with this project, say aye.
Aye.
Is that animus? Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Commissioner. Item D, extension office roof leak.
He, he, he'll finish it today. He ran out of, uh, screws to do it, uh, Friday, and, uh, I talked to him this morning, he'll be over sometime today and get it in before the rain.
Okay. And lastly, our flag pole that tilts.
Flag pole, well, Steve Austin come up with a deal where that they, it was two year, in 2014, it was two, two foot off, and it's still two foot off, but the guy, the, the, the Wright-Jack people, uh, said that's their specialty, and she looked at it, took all the measurements, this lady did, and said that she would, uh, uh, give us a bid back. That was what they did to, to get the base straightened up. When they figured it out, they'd come and look at it, and, and give us a bid to straighten it up, the two foot. Uh, that's the same company that fixed the parking lot holes out there that Jimmy had used before in Capitol Hill, so, and they did a good job, as far as I know, and that's, that's where we are on that.
So we're waiting on them to give us a bid for item B and item E?
Well, B is a, is a toss-up. They, uh, she said that's, that, they do that, but they, they...
That's not really their specialty.
Right, not their, their specialty, but there was a person that they would highly recommend, and she would talk to them and let us do it. She just came down last week, and, I guess last Wednesday or Thursday, and looked at all of this, and said that she, that front porch up there, so...
Okay.
Seal it, to seal it up, and this, she, she went on to tell us the things to look for. David, uh, that, what they, what we'd done wrong bef, who sealed it before had done wrong underneath it, why it's come off, why it's coming off, and so, some things of that nature. She said she'd recommend strongly that we don't do that, and, uh, but we, we, she says it's hard to find a good company, and, and Jones knows a person out of Tyler that's gonna look at it too, and give us a bid, but right now, nothing.
Okay. All right, is there anything else that anybody knows we should add to this list? Otherwise, we're still, we've approved one project here, we're still waiting on some additional information and bids on the others. This stuff's a slow process, I understand. All right, if there's nothing else to discuss there, or add to that list, we'll move on.
Need to, I'd like to add to that, uh, maintenance board out there, come out there and paint it on the, the, in the kitchen and all that, where all it was bad paint and all that. See about getting that and take care of it.
Talk about it, in, interior?
Mm-hmm.
You need to check on the mobile phone.
Yeah. That's what we're gonna get somebody to come and look at that.
I haven't done that.
Okay. Uh...
Somebody come look at that.
Let me, uh, could I, before we go on, could I, Steve, that was 2014, and that guy said that, but we didn't do anything about it, that two-foot lean on the pole? I mean, is it something, did they say it was okay, or, I mean, did there something?
He wouldn't, he wouldn't go out and say it was okay, but he, he pointed out that it was a tapered pole. He didn't say that it was a major issue as far as the strength of the pole, that we might consider downsizing the flags if we were concerned about it. The only major problem is aesthetically, is you look at it, it looks like it's fallen over. I think one of the bigger problems is it, I don't know what it looked like when it was originally put in, but, just looking, it looks like someone might have put a, uh, level against the backside of it, 'cause it's tapered pole, and the backside's straight, but it's not straight 'cause it's tapered. You know, that backside's level.
The pole's not bent, the whole, the whole thing is...
Right.
Come out of...
As I understand, it's got sand in the base, and with the movement of the flag, wind, rolling around, whatever kind of moves, sand wheels in, so it's gotten, if it's moved at all, it's gotten further back. The information that was passed to you this morning, those are the only references I could find in the court, Commissioner Court minutes relating to the, the monument and the flagpole.
Well, John, I mean, Cheryl found something more recent than that, where you had talked about, uh, I think it's the EDH Electric and their, and their buck truck.
And they, they had offered to help, but I also got some information back from the time that the monument was built, and Pat Disney was the architect, and Herman Ensel's crew was the ones that apparently set the pole. So he should know what's down in it.
Who, who did it in that pattern?
EDH Electric.
Okay. He set the pole, EDH?
That's what I'm looking at, I still, I got a call back from, uh, Bob Palmer, who was in charge of the committee that, uh, set up the Veterans Memorial Project.
But that flag's been there now how long? Since 2004?
Since 2004.
2004, okay, 17 years. Well, we'll, we'll look at what Wright-Jack has, and, and like she said, that's their area of expertise, maybe they can come up with a more permanent method, and if their price is unreasonable, we can come back and look at, look at EDH.
It's, it sounds like a simple process, but as I understand, you have to slurry out the sand that's around it, and then refill it, like get a line back up and refill it and so.
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner Riddle, for working on those items. Item 17, uh, this is an annual deal that we do, consider and possibly approve the annual renewal of the Office of the Attorney General Maintenance Contract for what we call the Savins Grant, the statewide automated victim notification service, whereby victims of something like family violence, sexual violence, et cetera, are notified, uh, when the offenders are being, uh, released from jail or from prison. And so it's time to renew that. Christie, anything we need to know about that, other than giving our approval to do that?
I've changed it for their regularly contacting you now, so I won't be...
Yeah, and I haven't seen that, that official notice yet, although he did tell us that it was coming shortly. So let's, uh, approve that, please, so that we can move forward with the application when it comes in here in the next few weeks. Make a motion. Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve entering into that, seconded by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 18, consider and possibly propose a tax rate. This is, uh, the first step in this multi-step process towards finalizing a tax rate, and based on some adjustments to the, uh, debt service rate, that 4,802. In order to achieve a net three cent increase in our maintenance and operation, we can actually only go, go only to $47, or 47.90 cents in order to achieve that. So we are, we are receiving about a one penny reduction in our, uh, INS, uh, interest and sinking rate, currently at 1302. New rate for next year, set at 1208. So we're getting some benefit from our, uh, bond refinancing there, a little quicker than I thought, that's good. So with a net increase of three cents on our tax rate, related to the portion that is for maintenance and operation, and then a reduction of about point, um, let's see here, 1302, 1208, not quite a penny there, but almost, reduction there, nets us out from an overall rate currently at 4584, going to 4790 is what I would propose at this time. Now, understand, we have hearings, uh, ahead of us, and a final vote in September, but at this point, we propose a tax rate, and 4790, uh, is my recommendation for that proposal, which is about 2.06 cents overall increase over 2016. As you'll recall from our discussions, we're, that three cents, we agreed was necessary to pay for additional fire protection was the most significant item there, uh, 2% employee raise, there were a few other miscellaneous items, though would be, those would be the bigger tick. So again, proposing today, not vote on this until late September, and tax rate and budget hearings in between there.
Well, I, I make a motion that we do not approve that. I can't, I can't believe that we haven't cut one spending, any cents out of our spending any other places, other than the interest. And I think everybody in the city should know that pays taxes, that we give that kind of money, increase in their tax rate because of giving the, uh, the fire department, the city fire department, nearly, that increase in the rate, that's where it came from, and they should know that. Of course, I didn't vote for it then, I wouldn't vote for it now, and I think it's wrong for us not to cut any expenses. We know what's been going on at Lumnet, and for us to sit here for four or five years, and we've got more employees and more expense, we've made one cut since I've been here, this Commissioner's Court, and that was on the, uh, uh, retirement from 250 to $2, but that year, that could save us about 90,000, but we gave all the employees a $1,200 a year increase, and that was about 150,000, so, to save 91, we spent 150, so we didn't, we haven't done anything, and I, frankly, I've been here for, this is my fourth budget, and this, this, uh, as long as you've got this Commissioner's Court, you can get ready to just keep having tax increases, don't make any difference, whatever. They raised the property taxes, and we don't cut anything, we just keep adding and spending and spending. And like, uh, we just, there's lots of jobs I've recommended we could do without, we've looked into. I don't understand how we, we don't have any kind of, uh, scale. I, we've got one department adding two new employees at $11.50 an hour, we've got one department, another department adding one, one clerk at $15 an hour. And, uh, I, I don't understand, what is, what's they're thinking, just, uh, we, we just seem to just willy-nilly along and do it, and I don't think it'll ever change. This country is just like Washington, this Commissioner's Court, we're gonna do whatever it takes to get voted, to get re-elected. We're not gonna look the facts and make a hard decision, and I wouldn't vote for it, and I wouldn't recommend that anybody else vote for this kind of increase, until we make some cuts.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
You compare that to rate to any of the other counties around here, there may be one, Morse County, uh, that might be a little bit lower, but not much, but, uh, peoples basically told me they wanted the fire protection in the Sheriff's Department, the stair step program that the Sheriff proposed. I think it's a good program, it's been needed for a long time. And, uh, if you're gonna do these programs, you're gonna have to pay for them. Our rate is still one of the lower rates in the state. Compare to other counties, this is our proposal, this is not to be accepted or okay at this time, we're just, a proposal, this .4790, is that correct, Judge?
That is correct.
Okay. That, uh, I still think that's a, 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 a good rate. And I make that motion that proposed rate of .4790.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fields to propose a tax rate of 47.90 cents for the 2017 year. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Riddle made a motion that...
That's what I was waiting on.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't actually hear that in the form of a motion, so I'm gonna hold off, I'm gonna go back. Uh, would you put yours in the form of a motion, Commissioner Riddle?
I did.
Okay, and that is to do what? Just leave it the same?
That we do not...
Okay, that we do not do what?
We do not accept the 4790.
Okay, what would you like to propose?
I'm not gonna propose one now, there might be an increase. I don't have a feeling in mind. I don't know what, I don't know what all...
By law, we have to propose something today. So what would you like to propose, or do you not have a motion? We have to propose something today, whether it's no increase, reduction, or increase, we gotta do something.
No increase.
Okay. Commissioner Riddle proposes 45.84 cents for 2017. Do I have a second? Okay, so, Commissioner Fields, I'll come to you and see if we can get some support for your 47.90 cents proposed rate?
Yes, sir.
Need a second on that, if you all are comfortable with that, and if not, we'll try something else.
With this just being a proposal, I will make that second.
Okay, second, uh, from Commissioner Parker, in support of 47.90 cents. They're gonna get that call, and then we'll vote.
I'm scared of me to death.
Normally, I'm scared of this one here. All right, so I've got a motion and a second for 47.90 cents, all in favor of proposing that rate, say aye.
Aye.
Could I hear, uh, one down there? Okay, got three, and that passes. Um, again, proposed rate, 47.90 cents. Item number 19, uh, this is optional, I will be, uh, out of town at a ATCAG conference on the Monday of our next scheduled meeting, which would be the 11th. Uh, I don't anticipate a lengthy agenda, but I never know what they will look like, so I'm asking you to consider backing it up to Friday, September the 8th, so that I can be here. However, this is not, uh, mandatory, and I expect it to be a light agenda.
I make that motion.
To, to change it? All right, motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite to change our first of the month, September meeting, back to Friday the 8th at 9:00 AM. September meeting back to Friday the eighth at nine AM.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item twenty is considering possibly approved travel and seminars. This is from Sheriff Ingram, this is to send Russ Hall, a correction officer, to Basic County Corrections Course in Texarkana, this will be a multiple day training beginning the eighteenth of September through the third of October. Cost of registration and testing fee is two hundred thirty dollars, give him meal money each day, two hundred forty dollars, anticipated approximate cost of four hundred seventy dollars for that, and that is my one and only request.
Make a motion with approval.
Motion by Commissioner Applewhite, second by Commissioner Fields, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-one, those are oral and written reports.
Did you get later here, we can compare these page forms to what prior year, the same time, right? If you're a little there, put his name outside the number. General County, we've got twenty-seven, twenty-sixty, root side to side. General County, right now, I have to pay his bill, sixteen, three sixty-two, nine eighty-eight, same time last year, seventy, twenty-five, it's down about eight hundred thousand dollars, bridge and boom, million dollars. Fund balance over two, road bridge deal, we also had some extra expenses, about ten hundred, twenty thousand dollars in reflection.
Didn't you move another million for construction?
I moved one million, Paul, we moved one million.
One million to road and bridge, you didn't have another million for building, construction?
No, because we didn't, I didn't put that, because we didn't do any buildings.
I know, I thought last year in the budget you moved it over.
No, I blessed it, we didn't, we didn't use.
You took it out of the seven eighteen, when you budgeted, right?
Well, I took it out, it was behind the real cash, this is the real cash.
That's the fund balance.
Yeah. I didn't take it out, but we are down, if you look at the logo, I put together all those road bridge funds, and right now, it's being three fifty-nine, and those road bridge funds, last year, same time, before, already able to attach a reflection. There's some piece of equipment that they're paying for.
We had a total of, it's about twenty-eight thousand, and then the thirty-five, so all one piece of equipment attached. The one third quarter, this time, and that, whatever the balance is, they go back and bring it over this next year, because they're not gonna make it. But they all have time to go out, because this is.
And they're not gonna have time, well, I said, already just included these dollars in, especially what the dogs and the top left, they're gonna fix it this time. So allow that to be carried over the next year, in the emergency, the car, that's why I'm sure, clearly, I used five thousand dollars, transferred that fund balance the next year to the road bridge for C O dollars.
Have you already made that, have you already made that transfer?
No, that's the next, I made all, transferred all of the million dollars this year.
I didn't ask it right, you've transferred all the million dollars in this year. Okay, and that's, so that's why, that's why you show an eight hundred thousand dollar reduction there. So if I, if I add both the general fund and the road and bridge funds together, we go from about seven point six last year to seven this year?
Yeah.
And all of our big equipment expenditures, have they been made yet? Not all of them.
No.
We bought the truck, we bought the compact, we bought the trailer.
It was three seventy, but.
The trailer, and then whatever, the trailer's kind of this time, and then we already spent seventy, eighty-four thousand, whatever that was.
Sure, sure.
So that previous little thing, and so on? Already about.
You did get the chassis, I thought I saw a different truck out there the other day. Thanks, the last page, the other funds, this is the last one, here, here, is the election fund, transfer, extra money, the other costs of that equipment, to take the budget, or almost. The election fund, that's about, that's my money back here, I got that, the maintenance call, actually, that's a little extra money, we did it, two thousand, thirty, four thousand. Then the insurance fund, there's a total of five forty-nine in that insurance fund, if you look at, there's two different bank accounts in there, account where we owe our money.
Tell me where you're looking right now, so everybody's here, second page, next page.
Number three, it says number three, okay.
And the figure you're referring to is what, which one?
Okay, look at the insurance fund, it's got two different accounts, it's got nine account, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, you see that? And then it's got insurance claims account, one fifty-six.
Go ahead.
See that?
No.
The insurance fund, that's.
Your own, right there. Three?
Got the insurance fund, you see that?
I got it.
The money is, we're still owing the money, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in claims, that money is good, claims, once they claim, once they tell us if it's available, so a lot of money's in the bank, it's really coming out, it's going out to pay a claim, okay? So only the three oh nine, the top, is the money that's available, that future claims. So while last year, we had five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in money, all of that is available in claims, so that's there, we have our year now, I don't know how much of that third party insurance money is not gonna be in the call, once we get a claim over seventy-five thousand, enough?
Fifty, sixty, I think.
Insurance case.
Did we get reimbursed? I think we can't start from every month, but I believe we reimbursed two or three, or we haven't had four or five weeks in the year, or not.
So, Laura, I think we have drunk, like, received that, I think that's.
Which is a record year, so we are, we are still running hot, we've had no, we've had no relaxing there, and remember, we have our review with Higginbotham Insurance, and a presentation on a tax proposal to consider standard insurance, health insurance, rather than our county self-funded insurance, so it will be a serious discussion next week. We're just, we're just outpacing our resources right now, and we're gonna look at the tax proposal and see if that is something that we would want to consider. There are some pros and there are some cons there, and we'll, we'll lay that out here, but we are eroding our, our insurance fund, and we've got to, we've got to do something to slow that down.
It is still, it's got three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and I don't know exactly how much, third, on the.
Yeah.
So, I know a lot, I can do that.
How much are you charging for each employee?
Eight fifty. Eight fifty. Eight fifty per employee per month.
Eight fifty per employee per month.
Which doesn't cover the cost of your stop loss insurance premiums, which is several hundred thousand dollars.
How much?
Three hundred, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand?
Stop loss, I don't know.
Well, the bottom line is that eight fifty per head is not, is not covering it.
This year?
This year, or last year? Okay.
In our meeting with insurance, it's two, do you, ten o'clock?
Or was it nine o'clock?
I'd be nine.
Do you have mine? All right, do you, anyone have any questions on these, Carl? Thanks for those comparison figures.
Make a motion with approval.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite for approval on our written reports, oral reports.
No.
Second. Second by Commissioner Parker, approval for the oral and written reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that, that workshop is nine AM on the fifth, and that is Tuesday. Nine AM, Tuesday, right here. Treasurer's report, Cheryl, you're up. Good, keep it simple, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
The experts say it's still unlikely we would face this, so we'll certainly hope that we're beating the odds. Rather than.
How many like a triple, small tri-.
Well, just as a reminder, we started, we stopped paying into that fund, that state-sponsored fund, and we started putting twelve thousand dollars a year into our own fund, and hopefully in time, it builds to a point where we, you know, have a substantial amount of money there. All right, got everybody's signature, let's make an official motion and second and approval on treasurer's report.
I make a motion.
Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any budget amendments, Carl?
Yeah. Number forty-three through fifty-one.
Number forty-three, just a line item change, and the district court department's moving out from other expenses, the first judicial, and straight. Number forty-four is another line item change, for the county attorney putting the pre-trial money and the hot check reimbursement monies into their department. It's just revenues coming in to help offset expenses. Number forty-five is for the county attorney fund, the other way, showing the fees that transfers out. Number forty-six is the pre-trial fund, again, showing the transfers out to general county of the pre-trial fees. Forty-seven is a line item change inside the road and bridge fund, just moving some money around between hauling, trash pickup, and tires, just line item changes. Number forty-eight is an emergency budget provision for the county attorney's computer with his.
So that's the one new money item that we approved last week.
Well, there's gonna be two, number forty-eight is for the thirty-five thousand dollars for the county attorney's computer.
County attorney's computer on that.
And the second emergency budget provision, number forty-nine, is for the money for Terry Analog. And then number fifty is just setting up the new two thousand and seventeen bond INS fund, and fifty-one is allocating money and making payments on the two thousand and sixteen INS fund, remember, those are the two, the refinanced ones, set up new.
Any questions, anybody want to do any of those? If not, make a motion to approve the budget amendments forty-three through fifty-one.
Make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-four is a pay order to approve the INS.
Like most, pay our bills.
Second. Second, by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing comments, just give you a brief update on our bridge lawsuit. We are getting closer to mediation date that's been scheduled, quite a few depositions in the meantime, Carl and I will travel to Houston on the twenty-second of September to give our engineering opinion on why the bridge was too short. I don't know what they're gonna ask us, but nonetheless, things are rolling, and there's a lot of, a lot of people being deposed, a lot of material, a lot of attorneys, and coordinating an effort like this with these five hundred dollar an hour attorneys is massive, and we're being well represented by Allison Bass, and we pay a fraction of what we would pay larger firms, I don't know how they do that, but I'm sure grateful for Bob Bass, I'll be able to give you a little more information perhaps after our trip to be deposed. I think that's Friday, Friday the twenty-second, I believe, that Carl and I are deposed, and a lot of, well, I won't comment anymore. Also, can I tell them about your retirement over there at the sheriff's office?
Yes.
Yes. Captain Fostick, Captain Fostick retires at the end of this month. A thank you celebration to Captain will be this Thursday from eleven to one at the sheriff's office, I would sure encourage you all to come by and tell Captain Fostick thank you, this is one guy who is, really flies under the radar, but. This is one guy who is, really flies under the radar, but does an excellent job in the maintaining and operating our jail, keeps us out of trouble, and gives us just continual high praises from the jail inspector year after year. I sure hope that his follow-up will be able to come anywhere close, but this is somebody who has done us an outstanding job, and we owe him a big thank you and farewell and best of luck in his retirement. Thursday, 11:00 to 1:00. Yes, sir.
At the sheriff's office.
At the sheriff's office, uh-huh. That's all that I have. Commissioner Riddle?
Well, I, I don't know, I think that you said a while ago, that lawsuit of insurance that we started putting in the fund, I don't, did you mention all, if you read that thing, how many exceptions they had, that would cost us anyhow, even if we have that insurance, they don't pay for discovery, they don't pay for this, I remember tons of things they didn't pay for.
No, I'm not saying I'm favorable, I'm just saying, if you have a lot, if you have a trial, we're going to be digging away in the fund balance, it's going to take a lot of years, not trial, that's not cost, that's two, three hundred thousand dollars. If you haven't, so it's a lot, we may want to consider putting more money in every year to put that on.
Well, if, if you have the insurance, you're still going to be coming out a lot of cash, lots and lots of cash.
All of it.
If you read, it's, it's almost, yeah, I don't, it just cuts the cost down some, it doesn't.
That's why we have to, why they try to sell it, because if we have to pay the appeals, I don't understand why we have to.
Are we talking about two different things here?
Yeah, we must be. I don't know what you're talking about.
I think Commissioner Riddle is talking about.
Capital murder insurance.
Statewide capital murder trial money.
But if you recall, when those guys came and talked to us, we specifically asked them with, specifically, they asked them what about the appeal, the, it's an automatic appeal in a capital murder case, and they do not have to pay for the appeal.
They don't.
And I think we're all on the same page.
Okay.
I'm sure not pushing that we reconsider that.
Those people had the meeting we raised above, and a lot of the love of the law that they're using, they have a lot of cases, you know, with the people, live in love with first, somebody that's next door, whatever, they, they do use it out there a lot of times.
We're taking a calculated gamble, but I think it's appropriate, I think the whole court's supportive of that decision. I'm just glad that we're setting a little bit of money aside as we go along, and we'll hope that we continue to be a county that does not have to deal with one of those.
And the other thing, do we have a new newspaper person back for the new people? We've changed ownerships in the newspaper, are you with the newspaper?
I am with the company, I've been here almost a year, and we did get a new owner, and I think we have to like our paper a lot better, and the new leadership, we have a lot of opportunity to change.
Well, if you've been here, I, I requested a couple of times to the newspaper, we would have a commissioners' meeting, and there would be an article in the paper two days later, so I'd get on the YouTube and see if maybe the information, no reporter was here, and there was a big write-up about it, so I'm certain that someone on this court wrote the article and gave all the information to the reporter that put it in the paper, so hopefully the new, new owners won't have ghost reporters in the commissioners' court to write about it like they have in the past. Several commissioners reported, no one was in here, but yet two days later they write an article about what happens to court, just like they were here.
Certainly not a ghost reporter, I'm not afraid of reporters, or whatever, case agreement out, out there, because a couple of them wants to be aware, I don't know, I'm kind of down there.
Appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Well, I, that, I don't know if that's a, you know, a hidden accusation there, anybody up here writing articles for you?
I'd say her.
I know that, I know that, I know that Marty Baumann, he's the editor that we previously had. He's not with us.
Oh, he's, Marty's not with you? Marty's not with you anymore? Oh, okay.
And I know that someone.
I'm not sending you articles.
I know that someone has been, Westing, he's been there ever, and I don't know, I look back to what, and that's happened with you and Jim, and through this part, so, and I mean, I didn't have anything to do with Marty, I didn't have any of those stories.
Well, I'd like to see two sides of every story, when those that, articles I'm speaking of weren't, they were presented and left out a lot of, I thought, important things. And I still have copies of them, by the way.
I was putting the information out there, I tried the best that I can to just put the information out there and let them have a legitimate decision, all facts, that's my job as a journalist.
Well, where did you get your information if you weren't here?
I interacted.
You, well, I didn't say it was you, I didn't know who, I, I don't remember who the reporter was, but it happened.
Yeah, that's who she's talking about, Marty, maybe he's watching the videos, I don't know.
Oh, no, it wasn't Marty.
Huh?
Wasn't Marty that wrote the article?
All they do is watch the video.
This was two days, I, I went to the computer and looked for the video, and I said, how could they write that? Why didn't they say this? I looked, the video didn't come out for about a week or so, the video wasn't out yet when these articles were in the newspaper that I'm talking about.
I'm going to sit.
I would like to request, um, someone to email me the minutes from the meeting, so that I can make sure that my story matches up with, that we've made any mistakes.
And remember that your minutes are, I don't know how quickly we get them on the, they're probably not on the agenda for a while, so we typically don't have our final minutes till probably later than you might want to report, so.
I would like to get a little rigor than accurate.
Okay. Okay.
They're on there about a week, week, six, seven workdays later, Joyce, normally they put on, on the agenda, on the computer, I meant, on the website, the minutes, that's when I get them, when they get on the website.
This agenda's a little bit long, so it doesn't have it on there, we kind of cut some corners there, but normally you'll have all the commissioners' cell phones on there as well as mine, if you ever wanted to ask any of us.
Could you put the road engineer's number on there?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
He hasn't had his number publicized in the past.
I think these guys are giving it out pretty freely.
I imagine those four would.
Well, there's nothing wrong with doing that, sure, we can, we can do that.
I could figure out one.
So you brought us, you brought us a good idea today.
Well, let me, let me explain to you, the road commissioner works for the commissioners, we're still responsible for the roads, us commissioners, you should call us, because we have to do it, we can relate it all, but I would like to know something in my precinct, if you have a complaint or something to bring to our attention, the road engineer, you can call him, or you, and I'd like to know also, if you'd call me, I'll make sure that he gets it. We're still responsible, he, he reports to the commissioners, and that, so we, we shouldn't be trying to bypass our responsibility if you have a reason to call me, Mrs. Chisholm, I'd appreciate it, okay?
Don't worry, I got you.
Well, I don't think there's anybody up here that hasn't had a lot of calls.
Well, I just wanted to share.
I tell them, be specific, they, they do need to call Roger, but call me, and I will talk to Roger about it also.
Fair and balanced, that's what we want, right?
You got democracy at stake.
Commissioner Riddle, anything else?
No, sir.
Commissioner Fields?
I just want to let everybody know, this Thursday will be the last day that the county will be over the county park, new management will be taking over, and we're out there, I think we've got, we've still got a few more things to do, we've got to mow and stuff like this, but the county will no longer be over the Monticello County Park. It will be continued to run, I'm very proud of that, I know a lot of businesses in the Blodgett, Monticello area are very ticked over that, because there's still a lot of people, the season's just starting up, but there's a lot of people come in there, a lot of people fish, and a lot of people are just now finding out you can go to Monticello or like Bob Sandman from the county park. With this new advertising, is my understanding, and trying to get it up on the map and stuff, but that's been a great fishing place for a lot of fishermen all over the world, we have people from everywhere that come out there fishing, so, anyway, county's control of that, and over that park will end Thursday at midnight.
You can be able to get Trent to give free admission to the Bluegrass Festival.
I'm going, I think, I think they will, I think I can work with them and they will give us, that's, that's a big deal, I don't know if y'all have been to that in October when we have that, and they have campsites set up, it's really fascinating, and they have Pickett and Sangin' from Louisiana, Arkansas, Tennessee, Missouri, if you want to listen to some good Pickett and Sangin', that's the time to come.
I think Christie goes, don't you?
Every year.
Every year?
That's it, Joe, that's what I'm trying to bring everybody up to date on.
Commissioner Applewhite. Nothing. Commissioner Parker, nothing. Okay, if there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll, I'll just entertain it, I won't give in.
I'll make the motion.
Jimmy makes the motion and Dana second.
I didn't entertain.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, thanks, everyone.